Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke. Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Mrs. Yerko.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Vanderpoel, next item on our agenda is your report. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First housekeeping item, hard to believe, but the Thanksgiving holidays upon us. So just a reminder that city offices will be closed November 25th and the 26th. That includes all of our facilities, with the exception of public safety, of course. The senior center will be closed for business as well on Thursday through Saturday, the 27th. And there will be a delay on refuse collection. So if you have refuse collection on Thursday, it will be delayed until Friday. Fridays will be delayed until Saturday. So just a reminder of that scheduling nuance. And also, I hate to be the bearer of bad news during this time of the year. But two things. First, really important to get leaves collected from your yards as soon as possible because the yard waste collection will end the week of December 6th through the 10th. So you have a little more time. It looks like the leaves are mostly down, but certainly over the next week or so. So please keep that in mind. Unfortunately, we do have to enforce leaf collection. It is against the city's ordinance to allow leaves to remain on your yard throughout the winter season. So please keep that in mind. Of course, you can compost leaves. And if any of you are interested in knowing how best to do that, you can go to our website. But otherwise, the leaves have to be collected and set out. And just a reminder that again, it goes, the final week is December 6th through the 10th. Some of you may get door hangers if it's getting a little late and your leaves are not collected, just as a reminder. And then if during that last week, your leaves aren't collected, we give another notice and the city's contractor does it. So we want to avoid that at all costs because it is expensive. So please keep that in mind. And the other part of my bearer of bad news is that it is the time of the year when we could have a snow emergency. So I hate to say it, but it could happen anytime. Doesn't look like it's going to happen this week, but you just never know. So please keep that in mind. If there is a snow emergency, vehicles have to be removed from the road. We encourage residents to sign up for ListServe. So you will get an automatic notice anytime we're in a snow emergency. And you either get an email or a text message. So you can go to our website and sign up for that service. And I also wanted to remind residents, even for leaf collection or snow removal from your driveways or sidewalks, there's on-demand services, one in particular that's widely used in the city. The name is a misnomer. It's called Lawn Guru. You can download their app. You do not have to enter into a contract with them. But you can use their service on demand as needed, including to collect leaves. And they will come out. You just click on the app, schedule a time. Everything's, the payment is transacted online and it works very well. Thousands of people use the service in the city. I've used the service. It works very well. So we encourage you to use that for either your leaf collection or snow removal, if you're not able to do it. And also those who may have some sort of limitation, whether it's a mobility limitation or a financial hardship limitation, we have a volunteer corps that can help as well with some of that work. So please contact 446-CITY and we can try to get you connected or direct you to some other resources. And lastly, I'd like to end on a good note, and that is that Sterling Christmas, believe it or not, is right around the corner. December 4th, 5:45 from 8:30 at Dodge Park with all the normal activities. So we look forward to seeing everyone there. Thousands of people partake in Sterling Christmas. So it's a great event for those who have been there. Those who have not, we strongly encourage you to go. And also another reminder, the ice rink will open on December 1st. So we have a lot of festivities planned. And I know you're going to like the holiday lighting. That's going to be on any day now. Some of you may have seen a preview tonight along Utica Road. It's going to look fantastic. So that is it, Mayor. I do not have anything further this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. The next item on our agenda is a swearing-in ceremony for new Sterling Heights firefighters. And for our presentation, I'd like to invite up to the podium our fire chief, Kevin Edmund. Chief Edmund.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel. Tonight, I want to introduce our new hires and administer the oath of office to them. But first of all, before I start that, I want to thank council and city administration for the support that you give the fire department. It allows me to have the tools to attract the very best candidates. And you can see tonight, as I go over some of them, we've actually poached a few from other cities. So we keep up that tradition of making sure that people want to work in Sterling Heights. The first person I'd like to introduce is Ben Vercone. You can stand up, please, Ben. Ben grew up in Clinton Township. He's a graduate of Chipewa High School. He started off going to college at Wayne State University for Business. And then he got the bug with the ride-along to work at Sterling Heights. So he changed his career path, got all the credentials that he needs, and he started to work for Macomb Fire Department. And we were able to steal him from there and hire him here. So go ahead, Ben. Sit down. The next one is Dan Giles. Dan Giles grew up in Sterling Heights. He's a graduate of Henry Ford High School. He went to Macomb Community College where he received his firefighter EMS training. And he's going to make a fine addition to the fire department. I look forward to many years of service from him. And then Caleb Teachout. He came way across the state from Grand Rapids, moved here with his wife in search of a fire department. Attended Ascension High School, or Ascension College, rather, where he majored in psychology. He came here and he's got hooked on fire department and has become a Sterling Heights fireman. So thank you. I look forward to many years ahead with him also. I'd like to introduce Dana. Dana Werman also is a resident, was a past resident of Sterling Heights. Went to Henry Ford High School. Dana went after high school to serve 19 years in the Marine Corps. And I want to thank him for his service for that. During that time, he was a recruiter for the Marine Corps. So I've had many conversations with him about how we can change some of our recruiting styles for our new employees and for the new generation that's out there. So I look forward to him. And we poached him from Roseville Fire Department. Last but not least is Joe Cisak. Joe Cisak grew up around the Sterling Heights Fire Department. We're visiting as the ad often. One of the things through your support, we're able to hire some candidates before they've got all their credentials. So Joe's currently in paramedic school. It would be kind of a pilot program for that. So I'm looking forward to Joe starting. He is a fourth-generation firefighter, too. So I'd like all of you to stand up and I'll administer the oath. Raise your right hand. Aye. State your name.
Aye, the name is John.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Sterling Heights City Charter.
And the Sterling Heights City Charter.
And I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
And I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
And discharge the duties of my office to the best of my abilities.
And discharge the duties of my office to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Just a quick little thanks to my beautiful wife, Marisa, and her mom and dad, Ed and Karen, for all the support over these last couple of years as I was trying to figure things out and get to get a job in the fire service. And I made it. I feel so blessed to be able to work for the city of Sterling Heights. So I thank all of you as well.
First, I'd just like to thank the city for the opportunity, especially not being a paramedic yet, getting the opportunity to start right away as an EMT firefighter. I want to thank my family, of course, my mom, my girlfriend's parents, my aunt, my uncle, my grandparents. It means a lot for them to be here, especially because I lost my dad last year. Sterling Heights is a super important place for me, especially the firefighters. I really feel like family. They've always have. So I'm really happy to continue to carry on the legacy and hopefully serve the community the best I can.
I want to start out by thanking my wife. It took me several years to get to this point. I left home about 20 years ago. Never thought I'd be back here in Sterling Heights working for the city. Very thankful that I had the opportunity, that it came up. My parents are here. Want to thank them. And of course, I also want to thank Dan Medaya. He was able to pretty much bring me up through EMT, all the way through fire and paramedic to get me to this point. So glad to be home.
I want to thank my parents. They've been the biggest supporters of me throughout this journey. I'm extremely appreciative of the city to allow me to start as being a firefighter here. Ever since I was 17, I wanted to be a firefighter in the city specifically. And I followed that journey and I'm here now and can't wait to keep on going for another 25 years.
Just want to start off by thanking my friends and family who helped me get through the long process of becoming a firefighter, paramedic. And I want to thank the city because I was also one of the few who started as an EMT. I was able to achieve my paramedic status within a month and a half of being hired. And I'm looking forward to a long, healthy career. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Chief. You guys can have a seat. I'm going to open it up to our city council to make any remarks. And council, anyone? Would you like to go? Mrs. Saroski.
Okay, I'll go first. So welcome, gentlemen. I am a nurse. So firefighters and paramedics especially hold a very special place in my heart because we are compadres. I'm a home care nurse, so I've called you guys on occasion, especially when I've worked here in Sterling Heights, to come take care of my people. I do want to welcome you all to the city. You are going to do great work. Dana, I want to welcome you especially because my son is a Marine. He's captain out in Pendleton, Camp Pendleton. Or excuse me, he's a major. Don't want to short shrift him. And so I understand, I saw you standing when I heard 19 years as a Marine. I went, yep, that's why he stands that way. So welcome and to all of you and to your families. Thank you for sharing them with us because it's a hard job to have them put their lives on the line. So I thank you all as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Counsel, anyone else? Nobody? Okay. Well, I will go for a brief minute here. I want to welcome you guys to the city of Sterling Heights and thank you for your service and the sacrifice you're making to be in our fire department. You are joining a group of employees, about 500 full-time employees, hundreds of part-time employees, and hundreds, if not thousands, of volunteers that make this city the great city that it is. I like to hear that you guys are, a lot of you have firefighting in your blood. And I appreciate that. And I really, I want to just welcome you to the city of Sterling Heights. Not to call you out, Joe, specifically, but I want to say welcome to the city of Sterling Heights. You know, you know, as a fourth-generation firefighter, the legacy that you're joining. And I hope you can impress upon that to your colleagues who are sitting next to you. I've had the opportunity to get to know your mom a little bit, and I know she's very proud of you. I know your father's very proud of you. He quite literally gave his life to this fire department and to the city of Sterling Heights. And you know, that is something that's incredibly special. And to see you joining it is remarkable. And not just you, but all five of you are joining a legacy of firefighters and public servants that would lay down their life to save somebody else. And there's no higher calling than that. You're quite literally the closest thing that we have to superheroes in the city of Sterling Heights. So God bless each and every one of you. Welcome to the city of Sterling Heights. Thank you for your service. And Godspeed. God bless. Stay safe and keep our residents safe. So one more big round of applause to these new. Now, I'll tell you, we've got a very quick agenda tonight, but I'm sure you're not here for that. So if you guys don't mind, Chief, I'll let you dismiss them out into the, into the hallway. You guys can take some pictures, hug your families, have a nice night tonight. And then I'm sure you're going to get back right to work starting tomorrow morning. So thank you very much again. And we'll take about a two or three-minute recess here, council. I don't think we'll need to get up, though.
No.
Let the meeting back to order. That was a great ceremony for our five new firefighters. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. Mr. Ochada.
Hi, council. I just had a question regarding the leaf removal. Does that apply to both front and backyard, or is it just the front yard? My house backs up to a golf course and a lot of their trees have not dropped anything yet. And I, historically, it's always cut it very close. It wouldn't pose a problem for us in either case. I just wanted to know what the rules are governing that. Thank you.
You got it. We'll get an answer for you shortly. Anyone else? Ms. Wright?
Hi, I wasn't able to make it the other week, so I do want to congratulate you all on your reelection. I also want to say that Friends of Foster Kids, their donation and Christmas drive is coming up soon. I think they're starting on the 27th for people wrapping Christmas presents. If anybody out there doesn't know what they do, they provide Christmas presents for foster children who've been neglected and abused. Most of the time, it's only a two-hour commitment for any of the things that you're signing up for. So please go out and help them. If you can't sign up, I know they're still looking for wrapping paper bows, gift boxes, stuff like that. So anything you can do to help the foster children during this holiday season would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Yes, ma'am.
So I was here last year, too, with concerns about feral cats in our neighborhood. And our issue has never been totally eradicated or, you know, even mildly touched. We do TNR with the city. We're very familiar with that. And we are still having an issue. So that is the topic that I wanted to discuss. Do I discuss it now?
Yeah, you have four minutes. So go ahead and you can tell us anything you want and then.
So this is not an unusual problem in the city?
Well, no, it's certainly not. So feel free to, so what I would recommend is you can let us know what's going on specific. If you have any specifics you want to let us know. And then before you leave, if you would leave your name, your phone number, and your address with our city clerk, we can have our city manager or somebody from animal control contact you and see if we can do some, something more to help.
And we are working with them now. So like I said, we are trying to help the problem. Also, my husband cleans the yard of approximately a dozen cat manures per day. And it's a neighbor that happens to be noncompliant with the program. And she has, she houses the cats and then lets them run. She has houses on her back porch. And I guess they have warmth in them or whatever. And she, and your people have been out there even to look at that, the grounds people or whatever they call them. And I don't know what they did beyond that point, whether they give her a letter or whatever. I don't know if they're still there or not, the houses. And then she just lets the cats run free beyond that point. She also does things to block our, you know, the way that we're trying to help Sterling Heights Animal Control by doing the TNR. She does things to kind of block that effort. She has, you know, threatened my husband, just totally noncompliant with our efforts at all for this. And it's a problem. I mean, we have monitoring outside of our home. So it wasn't for that. But now we do watch for cats on our, on my husband's phone. I mean, we have up to, you know, more than a dozen coming by, and it's not us. We don't have any animals. So it has been something that really takes up a lot of, a lot of our time. We're senior citizens. I still work. My husband's retired, thank goodness, because that's what he does a good chunk of his time, is clean the yard. We try to have a nice yard. And I just can't even believe, you know, after 35 years of living here, that this is what it's come down to. And I know some of you, I have even emailed in the past about this problem, and I'm up here again about it. It's just really out of hand. So that's, in my neighborhood anyways, that's what's going on. Just people keep these animals and they feed them, and then they multiply, and they don't do the TNR. So that's a problem. So any help that you can give us, I will leave my name and phone number. Ideas or whatever. Last year, it was a very large problem. And like I said, it was never, you know, really eradicated. So we're asking for help.
Okay.
Okay.
We hear you. Leave your name and number, and we'll be in touch with you in the next day or two, okay? Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Mayor, just quickly first, regarding Mr. Ochada's inquiry on leaves, you know, there are extenuating circumstances. So we work with residents in those cases. We're happy to work with you in this case. Particularly concerned about the highly visible areas, front yards, side yards, and so on. But give me a call or email me, you know, as time goes on here, and we can take a good look at that. Regarding the feral cats, Mayor, as you mentioned, this is a problem in various areas of the city. It often stems from feeding cats, neighbors feeding the cats. And unfortunately, that creates an inviting situation. And we'll certainly take another look at this case. I know we've been working on it pretty extensively, but perhaps there is more we can do, you know, working with the county and maybe some other agencies. So we'll do our best. Thank you.
And Mr. Vanderpoel, on that topic, is there a specific city ordinance that prohibits people from feeding or harboring feral cats?
Mayor, we do have an ordinance that prohibits ground feeding, and often that's the case here, that food is left on a porch or on a deck or on the ground. And that creates a real problem, not only for feral cats, but also for rodents and the like. So yeah, and there is an ordinance that prohibits this. However, it is difficult to enforce. It's sometimes very difficult to find the violations. And Trap Neuter Release is a program that's worked pretty effectively across the country. But it's pretty cumbersome and requires an exhaustive effort. And apparently, it just isn't working in this case. So we got to look at some other ideas.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Counsel, Mr. Kachubsky, anything for tonight?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council, I'll open it up for reports or any new business. Mrs. Yerko.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'd like to add a little bit more about Friends of Foster Kids. They are a nonprofit located in the city. And actually, it's Judge Toya and his wife Teresa that have, that started it several years ago because their daughter was a social worker. And I think the first Christmas they did it, they had 45 children that they took care of. Now they're up into the thousands. So even if you're not able to go there and wrap gifts, because even last year, they were compliant with COVID restrictions. So they still had to be working in pairs and you could still wrap gifts. You can still do that. But they still need people that will adopt a child for the holiday, which means they have a wish list. And you could walk in there and probably talk to Teresa because she's, from now until Christmas, she'll be there every day, almost all day. So, and you could talk to her about adopting a child just for the holiday. The other thing they help with is children that are aging out of the foster system and are going into an apartment, you know, after graduation. They help them with, you know, a microwave or coffee pots or, you know, some items that they would eat, maybe if they're going away to college. So it's a charity to keep in mind. It's located right here in the city. And you know, when we always look to whether our donations are going to the right place, you certainly see where they're going when you help them out. So I'm glad that, you know, one of the residents brought up the Friends for Foster Kids because it certainly is a good organization to not only give your time, but your money as well. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Yerko. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Yanis.
So I think everybody already knows, but Shayna Road is open. Very excited about that. But I do want to.
It was closed?
Yeah, you might have missed it, but yeah, it's been closed.
I think it was your fault.
But I do want to let my colleagues know, congratulations is in order to our very own Barb Ziarco, who is now the new president of Michigan Municipal League. And I'm not going to say what President Biden says, but it is a big deal. And, you know, for people who are here watching on TV, you know, Michigan Municipal League is, is an organization that helps us help you. They are, they are the front, they are the front lines in Lansing and Washington DC on all issues that are local. And it's a very, very, very important organization. And I know that we've all been active in it and proud to be active in it. But to have one of our own, as we have in the past, sit on the board and be president, it's, it's a. it's a fantastic honor. And I'm very happy and proud to sit next to this awesome lady. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Anyone else, council? Anyone wants? Okay. I want to just tell you briefly, ma'am, about the feral cats. I don't know if you're, if you're familiar with the history we've had, but it goes back about eight, 10 years, having to deal with TNR. It's, in my opinion, it doesn't work. I don't like it. We tried several other options. Those didn't work either. I can understand how disruptive that is. You know, I think all seven of us up here want to do everything we can to prioritize our neighborhoods. If you're not happy in your home, then why are you here in Sterling Heights? So I can tell you that the seven of us and our city administration will do everything in our power to make sure that this stops. And I, you know, I think it's, I hate when I hear, we know the neighbor's doing it, but we can't do anything to enforce it. It's sort of like the fireworks law. We know the neighbor's shooting off fireworks in the middle of the night, but we can't enforce it because by the time the police get there, they're all gone. Well, we need to get a little bit creative. We have to solve this problem and I commit to you that we will. Switching gears a little bit, I want to take a minute to recognize a sad thing here. Not an employee, but an individual named Aaron Walker, who is the owner of SW Excavating, passed away recently. And Aaron was somebody who was very close to our DPW. SW Excavating was, is our exclusive excavator for water main breaks. So they get to know our DPW very well. And Aaron particularly left an impact on a number of our DPW employees, mentored them, helped them, taught them a lot of what they knew. And his passing is going to be something that's going to be felt. I think he was, he was in his mid-40s. And so it came tragically and suddenly. And, you know, it was just a terrible thing for our DPW. So I do want to recognize that. I also want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. Hope you are able to celebrate with your families safely. I think we're seeing a rise in the cases of COVID-19 in Sterling Heights and Macomb County in the state of Michigan. So I just ask everybody to be mindful of that and stay safe and stay healthy. And last, but certainly not least, I want to wish a very happy birthday to my soon-to-be 10-year-old son, Hudson, who is probably not watching us right now. But if he is, Hudson, happy, happy early birthday. I love you and I can't wait to celebrate with you tomorrow. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
It moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.